I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
Pray with me. Father, we want to thank you for all the wonderful weather and the much-needed rain. To start off a new school year under these conditions is a blessing. We would also like to thank you for our wonderful teachers, staff, and administration as they embark on a brand-new school year. Please help those parents, too, as they send their prized possessions and trust them in our care. Please be with the Board of Education as they make decisions affecting our students and staff, and also be with our men and women in the armed forces as they make decisions for all of us as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Be seated. Jan, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
This is true.
And Dr. Pennington's absent, okay. First item is 2.1 comments from the public. Do we have anyone from the public wanting to make a comment? Not, we will go on to item 3.1, a SIPA presentation from Jason Reddiner.
Good evening. Basically, we have to come through once a year and talk to the Board about SIPA and what we do for our filtering protection. We've been using Lightspeed for about five years now. It's now actually called Lightspeed Rocket. It's not the Total Traffic Control anymore. We do the same things, and it still does the same things it's always done. They just have made some upgrades and some different things and gave us a different appliance. About four years ago, I think it was, we did a five-year agreement with them that's renewed yearly. Basically, that agreement let us buy this at what we had then, which was like 3,000 computers. So, we're only paying for 3,000 computers, but now we've got close to 6,000 in the network, and we could add as much as we wanted in that five years. So, we saved a lot of money over time doing this. We filter differently depending on where you're at. There's elementary school filtering sets for students and then for teachers, and then there's junior high filtering sets for students and teachers, and there's high school filtering sets, and those all, we kind of progressively, teachers is the same pretty much, but as far as students, they kind of get a little more and more as they get up to the higher grades and get into the one-to-one stuff. Do you, anyone have any questions about any of the stuff that we're doing with our filtering?
Do you still get a report daily of any abuse?
We still get reports. We send the reports to the principals based on the school site and the usernames.
Is it based on the sites that you have set up to not be allowed?
It's based off of some of the, it's different things. If they try to, because most of the time, it's, I tried to get to something, but I couldn't get to it. So, it's a blocked search query. So, we say, hey, you might want to talk to this kid. They're not doing their digital citizenship like they're supposed to be doing, because last night at 3:00 in the morning, they tried to get on to blah, blah, blah. And so, then the principals deal with them according to that. And then we have just suspicious search queries where it's something that hasn't necessarily been identified, because there's somewhere around 100,000 new websites every day, wikis and all that kind of stuff. So, then if it hits that suspicious search query where it's not sure what it is yet, typically, the company's going to go look at those and see firsthand, and most of the stuff that's there, we try to go actually and look at in the morning real quick and do a quick hit and see what it is and see if something, because we can just go click on and say, yeah, block this permanently. And then we can tell the principals and say, hey, you know, this kid was going to this site, and this has been blocked.
Jason, SIPA is Child Internet Protection Act, correct? We were trying to talk about that before the meeting started, and I couldn't remember what the C stood for, and it finally hit me.
Yes, it's the Child Internet Protection Act.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Jason?
Can you see any changes in the past years going into places or about the same?
As far as what they're doing or?
Yeah. I mean, are they?
You can, you can see changes as far as grade level. Does that make sense? So, typically, like our eighth grade, they're going to come in and they're going to try to do everything possible, because that's their first year getting the one-to-one, and they're going to try to push their boundaries as far as they can. And then by, you know, and it starts calming down as they get on up in high school. By the time they're seniors, most of them are just, I'm not even going to mess with trying to go that stuff. I'm just going to do my work, and I'm going to go on, graduate and get out of here. So, don't get in trouble. I mean, does that make sense, you know? But as they get older, it seems to. And this year, we're introducing the Chromebooks to the sixth and seventh graders. Now, they're not taking them home, but we will have a cart between every grade-level team. There's two per grade-level team, so they're going to have a lot more access than what they've had in the past. So, it'll be interesting to see if that will bring the eighth-grade stuff that we've seen in the past down to lower grades, and then by the time they hit eighth grade, if they'll not be so, trying so much.
And I think it's important to remember that that filter even works when they're at home. So, if you're using one of our laptops and a student tries to log, when they log on the Internet, it brings them back through our system. So, as long as they're using our laptops, those tech, those blocks are still in place. And, you know, again, that doesn't mean that there's not things that end up on computers that shouldn't be. Sometimes students get flash drives and download something from an unprotected website and load it on to their computer. Those kinds of things happen, and we try to watch that as much as we can. But if they're, again, trying to be someplace they shouldn't be, and they're on one of our laptops, they're going to come back through our system.
And with that, even if something happened here and we didn't have connection here, there is, there's two other possibilities. One, that it will take a local cache copy of policy, and so if they can't connect back to here, it'll do last-known configuration that we had given to them, that it had received from a policy update. And then also, it has, they have a cloud app that we put on there, so if it can't get to us, it can just get to the cloud and says, okay, these are the last settings that they put on from here, and we can put that, change those settings from anywhere in the world as long as we can get on the Internet. So, I mean, even if something were to happen to this building, train blows through this place, it's still, they're still going to be protected.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jason. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Pennington's going to talk to us about third-grade retention and remediation and overall staffing.
Pass that on over to Marvin, please. And Jan, there's a copy for you. Just wanted to update the Board on the third-grade retention law and exactly how that affected students in the Ponca City Public Schools last year in this summer. And then, if you have any more detailed questions, Terry Vogel will be more than happy to answer those for you. First of all, you can see in the first column that we had 70 students out of 370 who did not score, who scored unsatisfactory on the original test that we gave this spring. And that was 19% of our student body. You can look across and you can see the exemptions. There's Good Cause 5, and you can read what a Good Cause 5 is, 3. Those are the two primary exemptions that students were given. You can see that we had 13 students that received a Level 5 exemption, and those are students with disabilities who participated in the statewide test, had an IEP, and then they had been retained previously in first, kindergarten, first, second, or third grade. And we had 13 students that were promoted under that exemption. We had another 18 students who were promoted because of their performance on an alternative standardized reading assessment. Some of those tests, students took that exam soon after we got our state results back. Other students took that exam at the end of summer school. But you can see we had 18 kids that did it that way, had another four through another type of screening or proficiency instrument, 12 who the unit, who the, who the team that after taking the exam, going to summer school, being remediated in the summer, that the team got back together, and they voted unanimously for these 12 students to go on to the fourth grade. And then, we had 19 students who we decided to retain. Some of those retentions were parent-requested retentions. The rest of the retentions were retentions that it was, that the team felt like that it was in the best interest of that child that they be retained. When we looked at those retentions, we break those down, a significant number of those students were not full academic year. That means they were not with us from the first day of school. I think there were, Terry, were there five kids that met that criteria?
Yes.
Okay. And I think we had another seven that we would have retained just based upon attendance. We have an attendance policy which sets up a criteria for number of days they have to attend school in order for promotion. And so, seven of those 19 students would have been retained just under the attendance policy. So, I mean, that just kind of is a picture, and then on these, on these students, we anticipate that some of these students will be individuals that we think probably will be recommended for special services sometime during this next academic year. We, you know, as we look at this and we see, okay, so, you know, where did we, what can we do better? Where did we, where do we have some gaps? One of the processes we have in place is when we see a student is struggling, we have a process we call CART, which is basically a name for an intervention team. And it's, and it's where we get our school psychologists involved, we get special ed teachers on site, the principal, the teacher, and we start looking at what kind of services do we need to be offering this particular student. And one thing that we found in this process is that on, and Terri, it's fair to say, a significant number of these students should have been carded, should have been part of a CART process, but for various reasons, that did not happen.
Probably around half.
Okay. So, anyway, that's kind of what we know about our kids. And again, if you have, Terri's got a nice chart with lots of information, so if you have any other questions, she can answer that for you. Bottom line is, we're retaining 19 students for not being in compliance with the third-grade retention law. And some of those students will have an opportunity, Terry, to test again before Labor Day. Is that right?
I mean, we have it in our policy, written in our board policy, that they could mid-year promote if they show that they're proficient before Labor Day, and we will be giving benchmark screenings at the beginning of the year with our MAP, NWA MAP, and STAR. If they are proficient on either one of those, their grade level, well, even within a range within the 40th percentile on MAP and the 40th percentile on STAR, then they could promote.
Okay. So, again, there's a chance that some of these 19 students will promote before we get too far into the, into the third-grade year. Okay?
I'm curious, the age of the kids, was there anything significant? If they were younger kids, or older?
There was a variety of, I mean, that was taken into consideration, but really, our meetings with our teachers and our principals and our parents, once parents saw the data, they were really, for the most part, I feel like, behind the retentions. And I can really only think of one or two, but the committee had to make a unanimous decision of whether the kids would promote. If it was not unanimous, the student was retained. So, but, but for the most part, the meetings went really well, and I felt like that the parents, once they saw the data, whether it be the student missed 18 or more days of school, or whether it was that all of our testing is showing that this student needs remediation, which retention is one way to give a student remediation. It's probably the most drastic way, but it's still remediation for those students. So, we did have success in summer school. We had seven students pass the Iowa after summer school, so summer school was successful. And I feel good about where we're at with it right now.
And Terry, we did have some students who would have been in summer school, but they moved out of the district and did not go through the process.
Yes, and I do have the students that moved out of the district also down in our retention because on our CUME folders, it does say they were retained, because we were not able to have a meeting with those parents, because students moved in the summer, didn't attend summer school, and they're somewhere else. So, principals have been informed about all of these meetings and to update CUME folders because those CUME folders follow students. So, they have to update them as, did the student move on or was the student retained? So that if they do move, we'll have that correct.
You know, I think a couple of things that we learned from this process, it is a, as you look at patterns, one of the patterns that jumped out very quickly was that of the students that originally were not, originally scored unsatisfactory, that those were some of our most mobile students within the district. They may have been in Ponca City since they were in kindergarten, but they may have, they were probably in more than one school. So, that issue of mobility is a factor. Attendance, when we looked at attendance and we looked at students who had poor attendance in the third grade, when we went back and looked at second and first grade and kindergarten, we saw that same pattern. So, and again, I don't think that's any of a surprise to anybody who's a teacher or principal. I mean, it's something you can anticipate, but, so that was an issue. And there was a parental involvement issue. You know, we had surprising, we did not have every parent make it to our meeting to discuss retention. And that was disappointing, especially since we had made contact with those parents prior to the meeting and established a time and date that they could come meet. And so, I mean, we knew going in that the students that would, that would be unsatisfied would be the students in our district that need the most support. And so, we just kind of have to, you know, figure out how we're going to help that happen. Because it is, for lots of young people, it's about the support that they have, not only the support they have at home, but the support they get from us when they're at school. And so, we just have to figure out how to do a better job of that.
I guess a general question I'd have of either Dr. Pennington or Terry, if there hadn't have been all the attention given to third-grade retention and the laws and the repealing of the laws and the governor's involvement, et cetera, back and forth, if none of that would have happened out of this 370, in your professional opinion, how many would have we probably retained under the old system without all the latest attention?
Probably 10. That's a guess.
About the same, right?
Well, we retained 19, so I'd say about half. One thing that opened my eyes was the attendance. That is something that I will be communicating to principals throughout the year, to be keeping better track of the attendance and to ensure that they are letting parents know that if students are not meeting attendance requirements, that they can be retained. Because we can't teach students if they're not here. And when I looked at the seven or eight or so that I told parents that they could be retained on attendance alone, this was not a one-year thing. This had been occurring in pre-K kindergarten, first grade. So, that's something that, we have that policy in place for a reason. And so, we need to be taking a closer look at that when our students are falling behind and we're making decisions about retention at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other questions on third-grade retention? If not, you want to go on to the second part on staffing?
Yes, just to tell you that as of today, and we start school tomorrow, we have all of our positions filled, and that is a cause for celebration, because I kind of, I was going to, I intended to ask Shelley to send an email out today that says, we have all our jobs filled to you, and send them out to her neighbor, her friends in the, in the HR departments across the state, but I was afraid the backlash we got might have not been very nice, where they might have tried to hire some more of our people. We kind of had to fend off a couple last week to keep them from hiring our folks. So, anyway, so we have all our positions filled, but that does not mean we have as many teachers as we'd like to have. You know, obviously, this time of year is very chaotic as we try to figure out exactly how many students we have. If you were at our meeting last Thursday when we did transfers, you would have thought that we were short a whole bunch of elementary teachers. As, and I'm sure Terry, who's been on the phone all day and has done a great job of getting students placed where we have, where we have classes full, it seems like that we're severely understaffed. But what I know is that after we've been in school for about 10 days, that all seems to kind of settle out. And in some places where we thought we were, that we were understaffed, we're not understaffed. So, we'll just have to wait and see. You know, I think it's safe to say that if we could find an early childhood teacher, and if we could find an early childhood, a classroom to put that early childhood teacher in, we probably will consider hiring an early childhood teacher in, once we get into school for a week or so, just to make sure that our numbers hold up. The, what's, you know, what's, it seems like that we have an awful lot of pre-K kindergarten and first-grade students. As you get above first grade, we have hotspots where we have lots of second-grade students, third-grade students, fourth-grade students, but we have other buildings which have lots of space available. Now, when I say lots of space, I mean, based upon what our current class size rules are, which are not anywhere near what the 1017 class size rules are. Basically, we limit our enrollment at the four-year-old program to 23 students in a class. At kindergarten first and second and third, we limit to 27 students in a class, and in fourth and fifth, we're limiting to 30 students in a class. So, those are, so, you know, those are all above. So, you know, we had a discussion today, in fact, right before the Board meeting, and Terry was telling me, well, we got 15 spaces available at this side. Well, that's 15 spaces available because we're seven above or 14 students above what class size limits are in 1017. You know, I know you get this question all the time whenever people hear how many kids we have in school. The legislature, again, this last session, put a two-year moratorium on class size limits. And so, why are they doing that? Well, the reason they're doing that is because since 2009, since they cut the general fund allocation to public schools by 22%, and since they have not filled that hole back in, they, one reason they have, that's why they haven't done it, because they know that you can't expect schools to meet class size limits when you haven't restored the funding that you cut. And so, while we got a little bit of that money back this last session, we're still a long way away from being whole. And my guess would be that class size limits will continue to be suspended until the legislature restores funding to our public schools. I don't know when that will be. And you get lots of arguments about, well, you know, no, you know, you've got all the funding you need, and we haven't cut your funding, and, but the reality is, you know, it's really a hard thing, because if you look at, when you look at the money we get for health insurance and some other things, those dollars have gone up even with what happened in 2009. But the money that we get that allows us to hire teachers, to hire support personnel, to staff our schools, that's where we've taken the hit. So, yes, we've raised funding in one area, but we've cut it in another area. And the area they've cut it in is the one that most directly affects instruction. And that's the money we've got to get back. And until we get, until we get it back, we can't deal with the class size problems that we have. The other major issue, and it's a bigger issue than it's ever been any time in my career, and it is all across the state of Oklahoma, and that is just a general lack of teachers. We've had, Shelley, you'll have to help me, but I believe we've had an early childhood job posted since the middle of June.
April.
Since April. And, you know, typically, and we still have early childhood posted. We've hired some early childhood people, but we, but we still would hire, we would have hired more if we would have had applicants in place that after we interviewed, we felt comfortable with. We would have hired, we would have hired some early childhood people last week before school started. And it's, and it's just, bottom line is, there is, there is, the teaching shortage is real. It is not going to go away tomorrow. It's a combination of several factors. One combination is people have gotten out of the profession earlier than they typically have in the past, and that's because of the climate that has existed in Oklahoma for the last four years as far as teaching and what we expect of teachers and the pressure we put on teachers and the ridicule that teachers have taken, whether it's with the ADF grade card, whether it's with third-grade retention, whether it's with TLE. We haven't done things to make it a happy work environment for people from the state level. And then the other issue is, and the other, backside of that is salary. So, we have experienced people getting out, and we have young people not choosing to go into education as a profession, because when they look at the salary, they see that they have other options. The salary issue hurts us two ways. It hurts us because young people decide not to become teachers, but it also hurts us because we can't go recruit anyplace else. You know, I can't, I can't send Shelley to Kansas to recruit teachers because we're not competitive in pay. Kansas can come here and recruit, but we can't go there and recruit. We can't go into Texas and recruit. We can't recruit any of our neighboring states, because everybody that borders Oklahoma pays more than Oklahoma. In fact, the reality is, the only two places, we could probably go to recruit three places, Utah, Idaho, and Mississippi. Okay? And the salary difference between Oklahoma and those states is so small that it's definitely not worth somebody picking up and moving here for the little bit of money that we offer. So, we have a serious problem, and I don't know how the, how those that are elected officials are going to solve that problem, but this, but really, the solution to this is in their hands, and they're going to have to get serious about teacher quality and the recruitment and retention of teachers in Oklahoma, or we're going to have a bigger problem. Just a couple of examples. Broken Arrow this year sent a letter out to everybody that they had, that had, that they had not re-employed for the last three years. Everybody they interviewed for the last three years. Anybody that had worked for them for the last five years, they sent letters to, to see if they'd be willing to re-interview or think about coming back. Last Monday, Enid had 30 jobs open. Stillwater still had 20. Oklahoma City, I think, hired 80 people last week. And I don't even know wherever, and that's just some of the ones that I know about. We talked to an official with the State Department today, and she told us that she gets three or four phone calls a day from school districts looking for teachers. Where can we find teachers? Now, what that really, now, so that feeds right into the fact that it's been a pretty tough day here today, because we've had to tell lots of parents that they can't go to, they can't go to their neighborhood school. And they can't go to their neighborhood school because the grade level that their particular child in is in is full. There's not any more room. We have hit those enrollment maximums, and they need, they're going to have to go to school somewhere else. And, you know, that's not anything that anybody wants to hear unless you want to transfer. You know, we, last week, we dealt with 200 or so-odd students that wanted transferred out of their school. Today, we want, we had people who wanted in their school, in the school that they live in. And so, so we have a space issue, we have the number issue, and then we have a space issue. a space issue that even if, even if I had a classroom that was open at an elementary school, I can't find a teacher to put in that classroom. So again, as we try to, to balance out our student body, try to level the class load across the district because it's not fair for a student in one building to have twenty-seven kindergarten students and a teacher in another building to have nineteen kindergarten students. As we do that, we have to have some conversations with parents that are conversations we would prefer not to have. But it is the reality that we're in right now, and, and, and so, you know, we'll continue to have those conversations and, and, you know, we know that we will lose some students because of this, that some people will choose to transfer to other districts, some people will choose to homeschool, some people may choose to go to private schools. But, you know, I mean, we don't, I mean, our, our hands are, I mean, unless, unless the board is, wants us to put thirty-five kids in classrooms, we really don't have a choice but to do this to balance out class sizes. And...
How do you prioritize your limits, based on when they apply or previous year they get back in the same school or?
We...
How do you, how do you set your first thirty?
Well, they do it by enrollment, by when they enroll.
Date.
They date it, date it, they date it. And, and what we've had, and this happens all the time, we have some people that enrolled in one school but moved over the summer. And so, and we have, we've had, dealt with lots of people today who didn't come to enroll till today. And we, I mean, Terry's dealt with it all day, she can address it.
I've had at least, I've had at least ten.
Terry.
I've had at least ten to twelve families call between Friday and today that just moved into town. So they weren't here for the fourth for enrollment, and we really can't rely on our pre-enrollment numbers because they're never high enough that it would give us any indication that we need to hire more teachers in May. Because we have the vast majority of our parents that do not pre-enroll. So we have to depend on our enrollment numbers on the night of enrollment, which was the fourth. And at the Ad Council meeting, principals were instructed that when they got to those limits, so for example, if you had a second grade class, if you have two second grade teachers in your building, that's fifty-four students, and when you get to fifty-five, you put a number one on that. That's the first kid, that's the overflow. And they number those, and then I find a place for them. And they don't want to go, of course, outside their neighborhood school, but then again, we can't put thirty-five, forty, you know, forty-five kids in a kindergarten classroom.
So that's where we are. Again, we, we actually have had some conversations with an early childhood teacher today, and we're going to see where our numbers are. Again, that, we're, we're looking at that position. It's funny, back in the 2009, 2010 school year, we didn't hire staff because of, because of the recession and all the cuts we were taking. Today, the issue is finding staff. So it's just, you know, it's funny how that flips over a short period of time.
Which elementary schools do you have space in?
Well, in early childhood, we don't have any space anywhere. Kindergarten, I mean, we have a few preschool. The, the biggest spaces right now, the most available spaces at Lincoln. But again, we think that will fill up tomorrow. We have some spots, we have, was it, was it fourth grade at Woodlands, Terry, that had, like, maybe had a few spots open?
Yes.
So, you know, and then maybe, I think, third grade at Union had a couple of spots. It's just kind of funny, it's never even everywhere. It's just kind of hit and miss. And so, you know, the, the solution, and there's, there's really not a good one, you know, the, the fact is, is we have small elementary schools, and so that just makes it harder. If, if we had the same number of kids but only four elementary sites, then we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be having to move as people around as much as we do right now. But, and those sites are small, it's not like we could add, you know, even if we wanted to add ten classrooms to Woodlands, we don't have space to add ten classrooms to Woodlands. We don't have space to add classrooms to Trout. We can't add classrooms at Garfield or Roosevelt. In fact, the only building we can add space, classrooms to would be, would be Union, Brett, is that right? We've got space there.
Liberty.
Liberty, okay, we've got some space at Liberty.
Another, another issue that you get into is that you might have space for a third grader, but the family may have a first grader and a third grader. So in, we, we work very hard to keep families together because we don't want one student go into one school and another one go into another. So that's very difficult also to, to get them in a spot where there's going to be room for all students.
So I would assume this then overflows into busing issues.
And...
Compounds to that.
And again, some of the, some of the reasons that we offer certain sites is because we already have a bus that goes that direction. So it could be that, you know, I'm just going to use this as an example, and this is probably not a good one, but that maybe we have a, a, a class at Trout that's got an overflow, but we don't, or we don't have a bus that goes from Trout to Union, but we have a bus that goes from Trout to Roosevelt. So we would put that, we would have that student go to Roosevelt because we transport those students who are changing schools because of overflow. We provide the transportation in those circumstances.
Both before and after school?
Yes, both before and after school. So. Now, we don't do that on four-year-olds because we don't transport four-year-olds for any reason.
Right.
That's all at the parent because that's a voluntary program. Okay? Again, this, probably today, the last couple of days, it's probably been more hectic than normal. We, we always have these issues at the beginning of the school year. I think that they're more intense this year. I hope it means, I mean, the, the silver lining in this is that if it, if this is true, our enrollment continues to grow, and growing enrollment is always better than declining enrollment. You know, I'd rather deal with the problems of growing enrollment than declining enrollment. And so hopefully, this means that our numbers are up and we continue to grow as a district, and, and, and we hope that's what we see. Typically, again, we go through this for the first ten days to two weeks of school, and things seem to settle out after that. But, but, you know, it's not, it's not easy, and especially not easy if you're the one that's taking all the phone calls and, and Ms. Vogel's done that today, and like I say, she's done a great job of, of, of handling all that, and she's, so just in case you get a phone call and somebody wants to fuss about that person at the central office who, who's been telling her where her kid had to go to school, I just know Terry's had a lot of very tough conversations today and has handled them all in a very professional way.
Good. Thank you, Terry. Any other questions for Dr. Pennington on staffing? Okay, next item is five point one through five, the consent calendar. I think we've all looked them over. There are quite a few no-charge items under the contracts to the district. There are several software programs that are pretty standard to help the teachers. There's one that helps the students over at, I think, West Junior High, if I remember right, in some reading skills. Then there's the out-of-state travel that we must approve, and then some surplus resolution. I believe, Brett, there's some extra furniture or so with the remodels and everything going on that...
Buses.
And what?
Buses.
Buses. That's right, there were some buses on the list and a little bit of furniture or so. So unless anybody has any questions about anything on the consent calendar, I'd entertain a motion to approve five point one through five point five.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Have a motion from Judy, a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six, item six, we will need a motion consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following items. These are the standard financial reports each month. We went over these in pretty significant detail in the Finance Committee. If anyone has any questions, Brenda's here, she can answer the questions, or Jan can. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve six point one in its entirety. Got a motion from Don?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Question or comments? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point two is consideration of and vote to approve or not approve application for deregulation from some state regulations. This is concerning the services in library that are given to Trout and Union School. It's my understanding that we had a late summer retirement, and Dr. Pennington, Shelley or so, are asking that we replace that person that split time between two schools, four hours at each school a day, with two full-time assistant librarians be under the direction of a certified librarian and the building superintendent to provide the same quality of service. Service should not drop at either one of the libraries. In fact, from my opinion, it would probably be better because we now have a full-time librarian, eight hours a day at each school versus one person splitting time. Did I get halfway close to explaining it, Shelley?
Correct.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, or, from Don to approve it. A second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. All in favor say, or, call individually for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point three, consideration of vote to approve or not approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment with Sooner Construction for the Woodland Elementary Remodel. This is still under budget and it's at two point two million dollars, although that price can vary. Does anybody have any questions, Brett? Now, we have a motion from Don to approve in a second. Judy or Marvin? Second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point four and six point five, basically both address the same thing, has to do with the providing of speech pathology services to the district. It's Dr. Pennington referenced, those are really hard positions to fill. We've had to go outside the last several years and hire through contract companies. Six point four, I believe, is the contract for the full-time speech pathologist. Six point five is for the assistant speech pathologist. These are the same type of services that we had to go outside and get last year also. Did I get it, Doug?
Yes.
Halfway close? Okay. Have a motion to approve?
Will we approve him, Doug, then?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve six point four and six point five.
I guess we could, do we need to do them separate, Jan?
Both of them at once.
Do them both at once?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion from Judy in a second.
Second.
From Marvin. Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point six, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve subcontractor bids quotes for the Woodlands Elementary Remodel in addition. If you remember, at last month's meeting, we had four particular line items that we did not receive a bid on. Sooner went back, got bids on those. They're under the budgeted item. I think you have a separate document that hi, is highlighted in yellow toward the bottom, these particular four bids that we're now considering to approve. I think they're all, you're okay with all of them, aren't you, Brett? They all fall under the budgeted item amount. Have a motion from Don to approve, a second? From Judy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt?
Oh, I'm sorry, questions? I'm sorry, Judy.
Now, the, okay, so I'm looking, and there's three, are all three companies going to do something, or we're going to pick the lowest bid?
No. On, on this page, these bottom four on the yellow highlighted.
Yeah, the, the big sheet is just, is just who...
All the bidders.
Oh, okay.
That just shows you who bid, and then, and then we're recommending that we accept a little bit.
These are the bids received, seven twenty-nine on the rebid, and these were all the low bidders. Okay. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt? Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point seven, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following changes. A is some minor change orders to, to, to the Union remodel, it's minor things that Brett had asked for in the amount of four thousand dollars. B is a fifty-four thousand dollar request on the East Grand Project. Isn't this the structural concrete and the beams issue that...
But that's the big issue.
That's the biggest one in that amount that when you go in and you tear a building apart to do a remodel, you uncover a lot of things that you didn't know existed. So there were some structural issues that had to be corrected there, and these had to be done on a change order.
Move for approval.
Have a mo, motion from Don to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. This is for six point seven, both items A and B. Call for the vote.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Motion carries. We need an executive session.
Yep.
Consideration of and vote to approve or not approve a proposed executive session for the following purpose: discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report; to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation; or to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property; and to discuss negotiations. Do I have a motion to move to executive session? Motion from Judy. And a second from?
Yes.
Don. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point one two, consideration of and vote to, to approve or not approve the negotiated agreement with the Pock City Public School Association of Classroom Teachers for the 2014-15 school year pending ratification by the ACT. Have we ever heard anything, Shelley?
Yes, I just heard from Darren Love, and the ballots are to be turned in this Friday, but he said everything is very positive so far.
Okay. At this point, we could have a motion to approve the contract pending acceptance from the ACT. Have a motion to approve pending acceptance on their part. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries on six point one two, seven point oh, new business. Anybody have any new business? Well, then we'll go to eight point oh. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Judy made that motion and a second.
Second.
Marvin came through again. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.